We're all concerned. I think it might get side.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Council Session Meeting tonight, which is June 26, 2017. The time right now is 7:29. If I could ask everybody to please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dale?
Council President Haley?
Here.
Council Vice President Collins?
Here.
Councilwoman DeCruz?
Here.
Councilwoman Gladhill?
Here.
Councilwoman Veale?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. As a reminder, I'm going to ask everybody who does have a microphone to put it promptly in front of them. It's very difficult to hear from a distance, so if you keep your microphones in front of you, both the audience and the people who are watching at home have the opportunity to hear what you have to say. Item number four, moving on, is the approval of the minutes from the previous meetings. That would be A and B, the work session of June 12 and the regular session of June 12, both 2017. Do I have a motion on the table?
Motion to approve items four A and B as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Seeing none, that moves forward. Item number five, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries. Moving on to page two, item six, a resolution, six A, granting holiday sales license to Therapy Clothing Boutique, Therapy Boutique, 343B, Main Street, subject to the issuance of a retail sales permit, application by Lauren Wells. Is somebody here to speak on behalf of? Please just state your name for the record.
My name is Candace Brown.
Tell me a little bit about what you're going to do, what the plans are for.
Well, we've actually been open for 10 years. We started here in Wakefield. We are clothing jewelry and accessories, and we have another store in East Greenwich and also one at the Break Hotel in Narragansett, and we miss Wakefield. So we are opening another store here in Wakefield, July 1.
And what will be the hours of operation?
The hours of operation, for the most part, we really like to see when people are around the most, so summers tend to be busy with tourists. So, for the most part, we will be open 10:30 or 11:00, starting in the morning. Our regular hours will be till 5:00, and then it'll probably be Thursday nights that we're open later. And then Sundays, three or four hours on a Sunday, depending. People are around, we'd like to be open for that.
Sure, absolutely. Any questions?
No, good luck to you.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve item six A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on, a resolution granting a victualling and miscellaneous peddler's license to Yay Dog of Narragansett Avenue in Narragansett, Rhode Island, application by Tim Bristow. Is Tim or somebody here to represent, please come up. Did I say that right? Is it Yay Dog or?
Yeah Dog.
Yeah Dog.
Yeah Dog, okay, sorry.
My name is Tim Bristow. I'm Colby Blanchett.
Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Yeah, absolutely. So we own and operate a mobile hot dog cart. Last year, we resided at the Narragansett Beach area, and this year, we kind of want to take a different approach to it. And so we have been in contact with Bennys and have leased a spot in their parking lot. We want to sell some hot dogs there.
Are you familiar with our peddler license?
Yes, can we read through the?
Okay.
Doc, here.
Okay, so I know there was a controversy not too long ago with the peddler's license, so I just want to make sure that, you know, you've gone through the parameters and made sure, and as long as you have a lease agreement with Bennys, too, then?
Well, I have a question for staff. So if they lease, isn't part of our ordinance that they have to continually move unless they're serving?
But with their lease agreement with Bennys, does that change? Can they stay stationary at Bennys? It's appropriate for the council to grant a peddler's license, given that they're going to be stationary at one spot. I think in some other municipalities, this issue has come up, you know, what category would they be in otherwise? So I think it's appropriate to grant them this license, notwithstanding the fact that they're going to be essentially stationary, given that they have that lease already.
Sorry, it was a little difficult to hear.
Thank you for the clarification, because I know that we did have that controversy with the last peddler that did not keep moving, and now this obviously won't be a moving.
So what if you decide that you want to move it, I guess, at some point? Okay.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, I'm sure we all love hot dogs up here, it's not about that.
We understand it.
Yeah Dog.
We also have a very, very small footprint.
So tell us.
What's your footprint?
Probably two of these podiums.
Oh wow. Tell us about your endeavor here, your hot dogs.
Take it away. Yeah, absolutely. So we go Nathan's, all be Franks. We had a big taste test, and those were the clear winners. We have, our sort of our differentiator is our Yeah Dog hot sauce. So it's a pepper jelly sauce that is pretty unique to what we do, and we're huge fans, but obviously a little bit biased. And, yeah, last year, we operated outside the beach. We went to, we've been to a couple of events this year across the state. We're at the Gatsby Day Parade and some of the events, you know, in that area a couple weeks ago, and we're hoping to get a little bit more consistent hours and location as we are. I live in Narragansett, I grew up in Wakefield, so it's a little easier for us to set it up every day around here, too.
Do you have any plans on moving, being on the move at all, at different times of the year?
Not in Wakefield. Yeah, and so that's, obviously, it's not brick and mortar, you know, it is a hot dog cart. And so we will, I know we're going to go to, you know, Newport Jazz Fest, and so it will be the times where we're not operating at Bennys, and the cart will not be there. We've leased a space so that we can have sort of a consistent day-to-day operation.
I make a motion that we approve item six B.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to C, a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct a portion of the Ride Round Roadie Bike Ride in South Kingston on July 16 at 7:00 AM to LifeCycle Inc., Western Avenue in Barrington, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and an issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the Finance Director. An approval is needed by the Town's Traffic and Transformation Committee and the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. Proceeds will benefit multiple organizations and will support local cancer treatment. Is Matthew Luongo the event manager or somebody to speak on his behalf here? Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Matt Luongo, and I'm here on behalf of LifeCycle.
Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
This will be the second year that we're attempting to come back to South County. We have a bike ride, Ride Round Roadie Bike Ride is the preeminent ride and fundraising event for LifeCycle, which is the nonprofit. We raise money for local cancer research and clinical treatments. So the way that works is 100% of the proceeds that we get from the bike ride and a few other smaller events, we issue in the form of grants to local hospitals, and the focus is on treating people in these clinical trials locally and hoping for national replication, and therefore helping the rest of the country and hopefully in the world. We've had it nationally replicated a few times so far, so we've been pretty lucky, and we reached 500,000 raised lifetime as of about two days ago.
That's great.
And this will be our second time, like I said, in South County. It mostly started in East Bay.
Yeah, what part of South Kingston are you using?
We start and leave from The Farmer's Daughter for the second straight year on 138. The ride comes up through Broad Rock into Main Street and leaves back on Tucker Town, and then a small portion of the ride finishes in South Kingston through URI and back into Broad Rock. Depending on which option, there's three different options that you ride, depending on which option, you can go through Richmond, Exeter, West Greenwich, North Kingston, and so on. Hopkinton, I believe, as well.
What's the distance? You know, there's different options, but what's the longest?
15, 40, and 80 miles.
I don't think I'd be doing the 80 miles.
That's what I say, too, believe it or not, despite having been like the event manager and times of rider registrations. I am not a biker myself, just don't let that leave this room, please. But, yeah, we had 25 and 75 last year, and we kind of got a little bit of that mix that it felt a little bit too long or a little bit too short, so we try and 15 and 40 this year. And we're also doing a staggered start. Last year, everyone left at one time, which meant that through Main Street and Broad Rock, we had all like 150 riders at one time. This time, we're hoping to break it up a little bit, which I can tell you the police department was a little bit happy about, and we're going to try for that and go from there.
Make a motion to approve agenda item six C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Wish you well.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, which is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct a portion of the Third Annual Haley Dowdell Memorial Motorcycle Run in South Kingston. This will be held October 1, 2017, at 11:00 AM to the Haley Dowdell Memorial Foundation, 5 Simon Templar Drive in Coventry, again, subject to hold harmless agreements indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance, and naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the Finance Director and approved by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation and the Traffic Review Committee. And the benefit for this is Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, application by William Rush. Is anybody here to represent this race? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
I am Nancy Rush, and we're from the Haley Dowdell Memorial Foundation.
My name is Karen Litwin.
How long have you done this?
This will be our third year.
Third, okay.
Yep, third year. The run itself has kind of really evolved and has kind of taken care of itself. We have evolved a little bit as far as what we're planning on doing with the proceeds. We, in the past, have donated all of our funds to the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, and that being said, the CF Foundation is a very large nonprofit, and we're a little teeny tiny nonprofit. So we have decided that this year, all of our proceeds will be basically put into a piggy bank for the folks up at the Cystic Fibrosis Clinic up at Hasbro Children's Hospital to help with co-pays, medication, air conditioners if they need it, you know, anything to help them to make their lives less complicated, essentially.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
How much did you raise last year?
Last year, our first year, we did, we donated $8,300 to the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. That was our first year, and actually, we ran it during.
Tropical storm Joaquin, so we didn't have a good turnout on the actual bike run, but the after-party was a hit.
Yeah, that's still a lot of money.
Yeah. And then the following year, we did another, I think we cut a check for $9,000. So in two years, we were able to donate over $17,000 to.
Trying to ramp up, need the money.
The foundation itself, which was wonderful, but again, we want to kind of do what we think our niece Haley would have wanted, and that is kind of make a bigger impact on the folks local, you know? Yeah.
We have roughly 100 folks in the state of Rhode Island who are fighting daily to breathe with cystic fibrosis, and we really want to be able to have impact here, in our own backyards with people that we know and love, so.
And Haley was a South Kingstonite, so that's why we like coming down here, so.
I think it's great that you're bringing it more local. I'd make a motion to approve item six D.
Wait a second.
Second.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing no oppositions, you're on your way again. Good luck.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item number six E, which is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Wakefield River Festival on October 7 from 10:00 to 5:00 on Main Street between Robinson Street and Kenyon Avenue, and the parking lot to the Wakefield Village Association, which is located at 311A Main Street, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement, again indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance, and naming the town as an additional insured for this event in the amount specified by the town. And again, this needs to be approved by the Town's Traffic and Transportation Review Committee and the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. All proceeds will benefit the Wakefield Village Association, and I know I see her in the audience, Janet Bertwell had put the application in, so if you could just state your name again for public record.
Hi, I'm Janet Bertwell.
Tell us about what you're going to do.
Well, we're planning, again, to close the street between Robinson and Kenyon so that there's plenty of room for vendors to set up on the street, artisans, jewelry makers, craftspeople, so that they don't block the entrances to the store, to the stores, and hoping to have a great time. This is going to be the fourth year, it's the second year that the Wakefield Village Association has handled it. It was Festival FET before that, and that's about it.
And the monies are used by, if I'm not mistaken, by the Wakefield Village Association for specific events and things that you do.
Yes, yes, we use the money for the events that we have planned throughout the year and also hopefully get some more river fire baskets. I hope you've been down to enjoy the river fire last Thursday, it was terrific.
Any questions?
No. I went last year, it was a great event.
Yeah, pray for a son this time.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Motion to approve item six E.
Second.
All those in favor?
Before we vote, I just want to check with Amy. I'm not a voting member of the group, but I am a member of the Wakefield Village Association as a volunteer. Is it appropriate for me to vote?
You can refuse yourself if you think it's appropriate, but I don't think you have to in this situation.
Okay. All right, I'm comfortable not recusing myself, so.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Again, good luck to your group.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jan, good to see you. Moving on to number seven A, which will be a public hearing relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2017-2018, position allocation to pay schedules as shown on Exhibit One, which is attached to your agendas.
The position classification and allocation pay schedule is presented on Exhibit One. This is only those positions that are non-union within the community. When the council adopted the budget for the 2017-18 year, they adopted a change in the position classification pay schedule by increasing it by 2.25% on each of the pay grades. Each of the grades that are listed on Exhibit One carry four steps. The first step is a six-month step, each other step is for a 12-month period. Employees that are hired at the entry-level step would move after three and a half year to the senior step. That entire scale has been increased by 2.25%. And the cost associated with that increase has been incorporated and adopted in the council's budget. I would also note that any of the labor contracts that the town has at this point for the 2017-18 year require the same salary increase of 2.25% other than the IBPO contract with the Police Department that has a 2.5% increase. That's the change that's listed here. The council's required by charter and ordinance on a yearly basis to review and adopt the pay schedule in accordance with the budget adopted.
Because this is a public hearing, I would like to know if anybody from the audience would like to come up to the podium and talk about this. Please, if you do, state your name, and you have the right to speak.
Just one quick question, my name is Bill Rosen. Steve, where does this town manager fit on this? Are you on a grade?
He isn't on the pay schedule, it's based on a contract between the council and the manager.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Comments here at the table? Questions?
I think our municipal employees do a great job servicing our residents, so I'm happy to approve this. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Going on to the vote, item number seven A.
Motion to approve item seven A as shown in Exhibit One.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, eight A, communication dated May 34, first, from Susan Cohen advising that she does not wish to be reappointed to the Library Board of Trustees when her term expires this July. It's received and placed on file, and the council for the directs?
I make a motion that we send Ms. Cohen a thank you note for her service and put this communication on file.
Second.
Moved all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, B, eight B, a communication dated June 14, 2017, from Mayor Joseph Polisina seeking support of a resolution adopted by the Johnston Town Council in opposition to House Bill H5413 and Senate Bill SO0290, the Healthy and Safe Families and Workplaces Act that would mandate paid sick leave for part-time and seasonal employees. We have received this, placed it in file, and how do we further direct?
Make a motion to place this on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a question for Dale, maybe? We get a lot of these resolutions that are passed by other town councils, and then they're sent to us. When we pass a resolution, do you send it to all the other town councils as well? Yes? Okay. Just was curious what the process was.
Okay, now we come to item number nine, which is comments from interested citizens. I'm going to ask that if you wish to speak, this is your forum to do so, please state your name for the record, but in the essence of time and the fact that there may be several people wishing to speak, I really will limit all comments to five minutes or less. This is not a place that we can make any changes or take a vote here at the council table. This is specifically your time to bring your comments forward, so I invite you to do so, and I would ask again that you would state your name when you come to the podium. So now is your time. Come on.
Gee, you got a five-minute rule now, huh? Wow. Bob Trager.
We always had a five-minute rule.
I know, but I remember, listen, I go back a ways. I remember three-minute rules. If you go to Narragansett, you never know what kind of rule you're going to get. Anyway, I decided to come tonight. It's hard to get over here, but I made it. A little bit, I didn't get to salute the flag, though. I wanted to, I don't know how to put it, praise or congratulate or thank, I guess thank would be a good one. Whoever's the person that initiated at least an act to try to keep things under control on Succotash Road.
We listened to you.
I drove by there on Sunday, or Saturday, not too many people went to the beach, if you remember Saturday, but they might have gone in the afternoon, but it's not, never crowded then. But the main problem, time is from 8:00 until they open, and then if people come way ahead of time, then the line forms. What was done on Sunday, as I drove out of there, was the employees there were setting up cones along the side of the road to keep people to the side. And another important factor that I noticed was there was actually a police car there again, already, at that time in the morning, which that is when they need to be there. They need to be there to see what's going to happen. We haven't had a stretch of 90-degree weather, so who knows what's going to happen? I think I know what's going to happen, but doesn't, every day's another day, every day's has to be dealt with as it comes along, in whatever endeavor we're involved in. And down there, it's keeping the road open so people can get by and get down to the Jerusalem area, and a safety issue, which I hate to bring those kinds of things up, because everybody uses safety, safety, safety. But it is a safety issue when it gets really bad, like it was last week or so ago. It was ridiculous, it was beyond comprehension, really, how anybody could, how we could let it go that way. I hope somebody will plan down the line, and maybe next year, they can figure out a better way to do it. Okay, that's it for that. The only other thing I'd like to mention is I've been listening to a lot of stuff on C-SPAN and the NewsHour, and this healthcare thing is a big deal. It's really a big, big deal for this country. If we, if this can be passed, as it's been stated so far, of course, I don't know, we've got big problems, and I, like I said, anything you can think of as a person in the public, seeing this is broadcast now, if you're good with the internet and you can get into your senate or your house representatives, I think we're in pretty good shape in that in Rhode Island. But at the same time, there seems to be some belief that this possibly could be the direction we're going to take. Instead of correcting all of the problems with the financing of healthcare and everything, instead of that, we're going to do this ridiculous thing that, there's no sense in going into it all. It's very sad, very, very sad. Anyway, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Trager, your gratitude can be directed towards Steve, too. He was telling us he went down there on Sunday himself to see to it.
Well, you know what, we're thankful that you brought your concerns to the table, because without having your concerns, Steve would not have been able to go rectify the situation with the help of Chief Jabber and the Police Department. So it's people like you that come forward and help us resolve issues that really are a pain in the neck to you, because that's your, not only is it your livelihood, but it's where you live, too. It's your business, so. But, but thank you for bringing that forward. Thank you very much, very much appreciated.
Bill Rosen again. As a member of the Route 138. As a member of the Route 138 Reconstruction Committee, which hasn't met since May of 2013, I was wondering if anything's going on. Route 138 is still a problem, in my estimation. And even though it was resurfaced recently and traffic does seem to flow a little bit better through there, whenever there's some athletic event that goes on down at the gym or at the keeney process, or there's a graduation ceremony at Ryan Center or whatever, there's a tremendous traffic jam getting in and out of 138. And I was wondering if the town has heard anything about the Department of Transportation coming down here and indicating that there's going to be something done before 2022.
I think my answer to you is that at this point, the project was slated for '21, '22 in two segments. And we are now in the process of answering State DOT in the development of a new transportation improvement plan, which will be adopted on a yearly basis. We are preparing at the staff level for council consideration is priority listings for South Kingstown, which not only includes town roads but university roads. 138 was the subject of discussions today with URI officials because it appears in the first drafting of the state's TIP that they may be looking to push off the 138 improvements in an additional year. We will be sending correspondence to DOT to get clarification on that schedule. I will say to you that based on the 90% plans that have been prepared to date, I do not see that there will be major changes in the way traffic can be managed within the road structure that's there or the improvements that will be made. The roundabouts that will be added are really the only significant changes in traffic pattern that is being proposed by the state. That was really the product of that committee that, Bill, you've been sitting on for years. The concern that we have is whether or not DOT has continued to move forward with doing the final archaeological digs and drainage plans that are necessary to be able to get those plans to 100%. Hopefully, before we meet with the meeting in August, when the council needs to provide recommendation to the State DOT, we'll have some clarification on where 138 stands. I think that it is most likely DOT's objective to delay the actual construction of that project in view of the repaving that we allowed last year because of the deteriorated condition of that highway. But at this point, until I can get clarification from DOT on their posture, that's the best I can answer at this point.
Okay. I would just like to ask that the committee that I sit on might be called once while I'm still on there.
Nothing has changed with the 138 plans. The same 90% plans that the committee signed off on are the plans that are in place right now. The missing components are the drainage and the archaeological close to the cemetery. But if I get information that is contrary to what the committee has gotten, certainly we're going to need to bring that group together.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from interested citizens? Seeing none, let's move to item number 10, the town manager's report.
I had a comment. No, that's okay. I was just, I didn't want to cut anybody off. I have actually two shameless plugs, one for the Wakefield Village Association. Every Thursday night, they're doing river fire down on Main Street. South County Steel made these beautiful river fire baskets in the Sagatucket. They light them up, and we have over 20 vendors lining the streets and down by the river. And it's, we have music playing in Sari Sanctuary, and it's really just lovely. I was there on Thursday night, and the people that came out and saying, oh, how do you do this? And, you know, how can you offer these events for free? And it's because we have the type of community that shows up for those kinds of things. So it was just really great, and I'm looking forward to all summer seeing that and hoping it can drive some, even more business downtown onto our Main Street. And then for the Fourth of July, which is my very favorite holiday, we have the great fireworks display at Old Mountain Fields, and I hope to see everybody come down to that and turn out for the amazing fireworks display and take it to the bridges playing, and it's going to be great. So two wonderful things happening in our town, and I just love to see the community out and about.
And that band is very excited to be there.
They are so good.
I was talking to them today. They're very excited to be there. So we look forward to that, and I think that'll be a nice event as well. Let's just hope that the good weather is on our side, and if it's not, it will be July 5th. Anything else at the table? Steve?
Just a couple of things I wanted to comment on. First, I did want to thank Captain Ewan Chow and our Lieutenant Young, who really assisted me in terms of a meeting that we conducted with the DEM Director relative to East Mattoonik State Beach's operations as far as the parking lot is concerned. The two officers accompanied me on Tuesday to review the actual work that was necessary to be able to register vehicles. They then also assisted me in the meeting with the Director and her Associate Director for parks and his assistant. One of the conclusions that was reached is that as long as they're selling stickers at that location, we're going to see backups. One of the changes that they've made in the operational plan is to provide a third dedicated lane for those vehicles that have already purchased the sticker, so that they're not waiting in queue behind the vehicles that are attempting to purchase the sticker that day. What they've also agreed to is to provide better Wi-Fi service, which is necessary for those registrations. The third element that we looked at was creating an onsite, a holding area for vehicles that were waiting to purchase stickers if, in fact, the backup were to occur. I've also had the Police Department with officers there throughout the morning on those days where we've had good weather. We are not going to solve the problem 100%. On those days early in the season, when people are looking to acquire the stickers at that location, we are going to have difficulty. We'd like to talk with DEM in the off-season to find out if a better means can be, can be set up as far as an operational system. But I think that the first warm days that we have, the 85 or 90-degree day that we have, if it's early in the season as we had this year, we're going to have backups that are going to require the Police Department's involvement. On the first day that we ended up with a problem, we had our entire workforce committed to that street. That can't continue because the public safety for the entire community is at risk when we've got to pay that much attention to one given area. And even with that commitment, we could not provide for safe passage. So it's a work in progress. I think Sunday, which was certainly an excellent, yesterday was an excellent day for beach purposes, but what we've seen is that that goodly number of people have gotten the stickers to date, so it's not as slow as it was two weeks ago. But that doesn't mean next year, in early June, we're not going to see similar problems if we can't provide a better means of addressing the early season. I think they're seeing more stickers being sold as a result of the reduction in pricing that was there. And I think that there needs to be some off-site locations where those stickers can be purchased. I've offered Town Hall for that purpose as a means of trying to address some of the problems. So we will continue to work on it, but certainly there's been a lot of attention given to this problem as we go forward. The second item I wanted to mention tonight is that the tax bills have been uploaded to the printing company. The tax bills are due to go in the mail on Friday of this week. I would note that we are using the assessment roll for motor vehicles before any legislative amendments are made to it. Those legislative amendments, which were contained in the budget adopted by the House, have now been brought forward and will be considered by the Senate tomorrow and then be passed forward to the governor's office for consideration. Had we delayed the billing based on all of other communities that would be in line in a schedule, we would be looking at the bills being delayed probably till the first week in August. Doing that would provide less than a proper 30-day period for people to be able to make quarter payments or to be able to address their bills on a timely schedule. We did not want to change our billing cycle since people are used to the billing cycle that we have used for many, many, many years. So we have sent that out. If, in fact, the legislation requires a reduction, what was passed by the House calls for a 5% reduction in the assessment values associated with the motor vehicles. In the case of South Kingstown, the average, a $30,000 car would see a $16 abatement. A $15,000 car would see a $6.55 abatement. What we're looking at is providing the knowledge as to what the abatements are on a per-vehicle basis, and what we would assume that some people would take that as credit in the current year or would allow that credit to be brought forward in their 2019 bills, which would be mailed out this time next year. We would show the credit there. So we're moving forward with the tax program, the way our program has always been instituted. It's unfortunate that the General Assembly has seen fit to make legislative amendments that are going to affect tax rolls for many communities that have July 1 fiscal years. But that's the situation that we're faced with. We will address it, and we will provide the administrative supports necessary to get the information to each and every taxpayer. One other change that they will see is that in the past, vehicles 25 years and older were tax exempted. Now it's going to be 15 years exempted. The overall tax abatement that may be possible is in the range of about $325,000 for South Kingstown with all of the vehicles, the 33,000 vehicles that we're dealing with. If that same roll was in Providence, it would be three times that amount based on the fact that their tax roll, their tax rate is three times as high as what our tax rate is in South Kingstown. This is a major deficit for the communities, rural or suburban communities, where over the next six years, that same type of three times, $3 for every $1 that South Kingstown gets will be going to the urban areas. It's a disappointment, but that's the way that legislative act is set up. There will be minimal value, but at least there'll be some value given to the taxpayer. The tax rate for next year has been set at $15.31, which is a 22-cent increase over the current-year rate of $15.09. Works out to a 1.46% increase in the rate and a 1.8% increase in the levy. The average house in South Kingstown is valued at $353,000, meaning that the taxes due on that home over last year will be approximately $77 for the year. That will be what goes out in the mail on Friday. With that, those are the two issues I wanted to comment on this evening. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Town solicitors report.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on to item number 12A, appointments, a resolution appointing.
Make a resolution to appoint Jay Vernon Wyman to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire September 2019. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no opposition, the motion carries.
Make a couple of appointments, reappointments to the Library Board of Trustees for Betty Cotter and Donna Gilton for terms to expire July 2017.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
And we have a vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees, and I'd like to make a resolution to appoint Elizabeth Crowell to the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire July 2020, I believe it is. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no oppositions, that motion also carries.
And just a comment on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. That committee calls for a minimum of five, and so far, we've had four applicants, so I think council will not be making appointments until we have the minimum of five.
Get your applications in now.
All right, run while the weather's good. Moving on to new business, 13B. A lot of these have a lot of verbiage, so I will just make a resolution, this is a resolution authorizing an award of bid for miscellaneous road building materials to the following bidders at unit prices and is further described in a memorandum from Public Services Director to the Town Manager on June 19, bid recommendations for road building materials. I won't go through all of these. They are in the packet. They're very, very lengthy. Do we have any discussion on these or any recommendations?
Recommend the council approve as requested by the Public Services Director.
Motion to approve item 13B as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no oppositions, that motion carries. Moving on to C, if I'm not mistaken, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Microback Louisiana Veens Drive, Daville, Connecticut for analytical laboratory testing services through June 30, 2020 at unit prices bid and is further described in the memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager entitled Laboratory Testing Services dated June 9.
We're asking the council to award the second lowest bidder, price difference is $1,094. Low bid, we've had some difficulty with some of the quality control necessary on the samples.
Motion to approve 13C. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no oppositions, again, motion carries. We're moving on to D, a resolution authorizing an award of bid for reinforced concrete pipe to the following bidder at a unit prices bid and as further detailed, again, in a memorandum dated June 19 from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager, reinforced concrete pipe.
We had one bidder here, a bidder that has applied in the past, recommend approval as presented on the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppositions? Moving on to E, a resolution authorizing an award of bid for drainage, concrete curb, retaining wall, excuse me, retaining wall materials to the following bidders at unit prices bid. And this is described, again, in a memorandum dated June 19 from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager for drainage, concrete curb, and retaining wall materials.
As with all bids associated with road building materials or drainage materials, what we do is to award based on lowest qualified bid by material. We have five vendors that bid on these materials. Four of those vendors will be awarded portions of the overall contract.
Motion to approve item 13E.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Again, carries. F, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Miozy Incorporated Compass Circle in North Kingstown for the 2017-2018 pavement reclamation and overlay program in an amount not to exceed $899,500, including a contingency and is further described in a memo, again, dated June 19, from the Public Services Director to Town Manager, pavement reclamation and overlay.
One of the major road improvement projects within the capital budget on a yearly basis is the pavement reclamation and overlay. This year for the 17-18 year, we will be looking at reconstruction or paving of South Road from Post Road to Curtis Corner, Pond Street from Route 1 to the Marinas, Coppin to Drive, Browning Street, and Coast Guard Avenue in Green Hill. Because this contract's awarded on a unit price basis, we will do a reconciliation after we get each of these roads completed. If there's additional roads that can be done, we'll come back to the council for additional authorization. At this point, we're anticipating about a $900,000 expenditure, which includes a 12% contingency, and we're looking at funding sources from the Capital Improvement Program, the Public Works Improvement Fund, as well as $200,000 in funds that will be issued next month with a 15-year repayment schedule.
Motion to approve item 13F.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Okay. G, a resolution authorizing the transfer of $100,000 from the Open Space Acquisition Fund 0404 to the Affordable Housing Fund 0333. Fund 0404 to the Affordable Housing Fund 0332 in order to support affordable housing initiatives as presented in the fiscal year Town Council Budget of 2017-2018 for the Capital Improvement Program adopted January 23, 2017.
Items G and H on this agenda this evening implement the adoption of Capital Improvement Program with $100,000 going to the Affordable Housing Fund to provide seed money for necessary studies to look at what type of affordable housing types are necessary in South Kingstown. And item H, $200,000, that would go into the Recreation Improvement Fund, which would provide the local funding necessary to augment the grant that we would receive from DEM for the construction of the Bike Path Connector from Dominic Savio to the South County Commons.
Can we vote on items G and H together?
You can vote both of them together if you wish.
I just want to say, I think I'm particularly proud of item G and the $100,000 into that Affordable Housing Collaborative. I think it's a step in the right direction, and we'll be, I'm excited to see what they can put together and some initiatives that they can find. And I also am really excited to see some movement on the Bike Path Connector to the Commons. I think with the rec center now, that's going to be utilized a lot more, and I'm just excited to see these two things get off the ground. So good job to the staff that made it happen.
I'll echo those sentiments. I think I'm really looking forward to see what the Affordable Housing Collaborative can sort of come up with in terms of a plan for how we can get more affordable housing in town. Do we know how they might consider spending this? Like, what are the terms that they'll be given when they get this?
At this point, what we're looking at recommending from a staff perspective in terms of working with the Affordable Housing Committee is a study that would look at and analyze what specific needs are in South Kingstown. Is it, you know, reconstruction or modification of existing structures? Is it single-family? Is it condominium? Is it age-restricted? And really, locations of where that should be. And also to take a look at the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations as they relate to affordable housing. Questions that need to be addressed is, should affordable housing be in a subdivision that's out on Route 2 if there's no transportation available or pedestrian access to business centers? And how do you restructure within the subdivision regulations to determine where that would go? Is it lump-sum contributions to a reserve fund? Is it a requirement that units be rehabilitated in existing areas of town that have public transportation and have pedestrian access to business centers? Those would be the types of questions I would think should be asked in the study. Again, I'd like to have the Planning Director working with the Affordable Housing Committee to come up with that study. I don't expect the study to be the $100,000. I expect the study to be certainly much less than that, so that the remaining money can be used as incentive money or leverage money with private development that may wish to become involved, working with the town. So there's a number of different ways it could go, Abel. At this point, I think it needs to be studied because everybody talks about affordable housing, but nobody talks about what type of affordable housing. Is it apartment complexes, or is it scattered housing? And how does it relate to our Section 8 markets that are in South Kingstown?
Great. Well, I make a motion to approve items G and H.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item I, a resolution authorizing tax collection procedures as shown on Exhibit 2. We discussed that a little bit.
The resolutions are contained in Exhibit 2. What they do is they provide for what the maximum tax levy will be for the year. It establishes the four quarterly payments opportunity. It establishes the full pay date of September 1, and it also provides for the interest penalty at 12% for unpaid amounts back to August 1. It also provides opportunity for the direction to the tax collector for establishing tax fails in the future for prior-year taxes.
Motion to approve item 13A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving to J, a resolution formally adopting the employee benefits provided to non-union personnel as presented in the fiscal year 2017-2018 final budget, which was adopted April 24 of 2017, including the basic wage and salary program and longevity benefits effective July 1 of this year, and is further described in the memorandum from the Town Manager to the Council dated June 21.
Other than the salary increase, which the council has already addressed at the 2.25, there are no changes in other monetary issues relative to longevity adjustments or for health and dental benefits. Both those costs remain the same.
Motion to approve item 13J.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. K, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Howard Johnson in Peacedale, Rhode Island for the purchase of a utility tractor in accordance with the bid specifications in amount not to exceed $22,800, including a trade-in allowance of $7,000, and which is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Legis Services to the Town Manager dated June 21.
We're looking for the acquisitions on the utility tractor in item K with lowest qualified bidder at $22,800 to Howard Johnson, and on item L to turf products for the turf aerator at a cost of $26,813. Ask the council if you wish to box those together to award for the lowest qualified that's on board.
Just wanted to recognize that a lot of these bids that we've been awarding recently are local businesses, you know, Howard Johnson, Wrighton Peacedale, South County Sand and Gravel, you know, Pat's Power Equipment in Charlestown, and it's just nice to see the town has such a great relationship with these local businesses and can utilize our dollars there. So I appreciate the effort to find someone local.
And the comment I'll make on the Howard Johnson's bid, at least the trade-in allowance seemed to be much more generous than what we've seen in the past, so.
Yeah.
Happy to see that.
I like it, Joe.
Motion to approve items 13K and L.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving forward to N. This is a resolution granting a request for the Domestic Violence Resource Center, DVR SCS, for pre-development funding support in the amount of $7,200 from the Affording Housable Fund 0332 for the acquisition, potential acquisition of a property at 210 High Street with a $1,200 initial allocation for appraisal services, and the remaining funds will be allocated at the discretion of the Director of Planning based on the outcome of the appraisal, and this is described in a memorandum dated June 21, to request for pre-development resources from the Town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund grant. Of the request is contingent upon positive recognition from the Housing Collaborative. Many?
First, you received a letter this evening based on the meeting of the Affordable Housing Collaborative, which last week reviewed this request for funding and provided an endorsement and recommendation. What we have done within the resolution this evening is to provide authority for the appraisal to be conducted and for the second and third items to be at the direction of the Planning Director if, in fact, the domestic violence wishes to go forward once they get the numbers on the property appraisal. I would note that Mary Rota, the Executive Director, was here this evening, had another commitment. I told her that I would speak on her behalf. Recommendation is to provide the authorization. At the current time, I think we have $8,800 that's in that fund with $100,000 that you added this evening. We'll be working off that, off that fund value.
Steve, I just have a question about, Domestic Violence Resource Center had a similar project they brought before us, and I wondered the status of that.
It did not go forward. That's why this project is with us at this point. Once they did the appraisal, they could not agree on a sale price.
Okay.
And that was my concern with the second project that we look at it the same way. I canceled the remainder of that purchase order for that work that was on the property closest to Wakefield School.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 13N.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Moving on to P, which is a resolution authorizing an amendment of an award of bid originally granted November 23 of 2015 to Balo Electric Services, Whitford Street here in Wakefield, for the town building fire alarm testing services through August 34, 2018, for an amount not to exceed $56,98 per year, and amount not to exceed $6,948 per year to include Main Street Comfort Station and the Community Rec Center as further described in a memorandum dated June 8.
What you're doing here tonight is to add a total of $1,250 in authorization because we're adding two buildings that need fire alarm inspections. The contract that was originally awarded back in November of 2015, obviously, the rec center and the comfort station were not in place at that time, so that they weren't considered. Now that we've got really five quarters that need to be inspected, then what we need to do is to amend that contract to be able to provide the necessary inspections on both of those buildings. Recommend council award as presented the agenda tonight.
Motion to approve 13P.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no further discussion. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a second.
A second.
All those in favor, except for Joe?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.